Okay, I will call the public hearing meeting to order. Before we start, just a general housekeeping and information to remind council that you're here to listen to the presentations that will be given to us. It's not to ask questions or to debate at all. And to the general public, if you would like to make, come forward and offer your name and address, and then whether or not you're in for or against, or your comments regarding the public hearing, the bylaw. So I will call this to order, and in front of us is a supporting documentation for bylaw 1965-2018, and it is to, a bylaw to establish the composition of council. City Manager Sepatelli?
Yeah, it's just for council's information, so this bylaw has, as per the municipal act, has been posted in both the Nickel Belt News, Thompson Citizen, on our Facebook page and NY page.
Thank you. So I'll open up to the general public regarding this public hearing. Just get you two to write your name and address down, please.
Okay, Les Over, 16th ninth place. I'm certainly opposed to the resolution to go from eight to six councillors. As most of you know, I've lived in this city for a long time. In fact, it's 39 years. Came here as a young kid and started working over at INCO and other companies at INCO for a time. And I certainly know the situation in regards to what's happening with workers being laid off, and it's all relevant, I'll get to the point in a minute. There's going to be laid off, starting again in April and again in October, where we'll see devastation to this community with hundreds of big-paying jobs and a lot of spend-off that's going to happen from that. In my many years, I'm serving on a lot of committees in Thompson, during the good times, you need a full slate of people working on the issues. And I believe with what the city is going to face in the next couple of years for sure, before it starts to settle out a bit, there's going to be a real overload on the councillors, there's going to be many issues with the public, a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, a lot of committees that needs to be formed to work with people to either find employment or other ways of survival in Thompson. And I believe that by going from eight to six, you are going to put on a tremendous amount of work on each of those councillors. And what happens when one person is overloaded? You can do a couple of things real good, 10 things you ain't getting very much done. So I think that the council is making a big mistake. I've watched you in council for the last few years, and you have had enough time getting the work done that you've already got in front of you. And now is the opportunity to really come together with a new council and keep the number of members that you have going into the future. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Les. Anybody else from the public who would like to speak in for or opposed to this?
My name is Chu Chong. I oppose your reduction of the city council from eight to six. May I ask you a question, like, can I address you as a councillor Valentino?
You can address a question. You need to chair.
Okay, can I ask you a question? Yeah, okay. My question to you, can you explain to us the reason of reducing the number of councillors?
Well, I can explain to you that from the council's budget deliberations, it was one of the discussion points at budget, that in taking a leadership and asking, and looking at cuts through our budget and our operating costs, that this was one of the discussions that was put on the table. So now we're at the process where we open it to the public to hear whether they're in favor of this or opposed.
Okay, now, in, in term of representing the taxpayer, like, my question to you is, is more voice can represent better, or less voice can represent better?
You've got to repeat that question to me.
In term of representing the taxpayer, okay, can you tell me, more voice can better represent, or less voice can better represent?
Well, I think you look at the whole of what we're working with, and when you look at our whole operating budget, when you look at the information we were given as a council with how the rest of the province is structured, with other municipalities the same size as us, it's not so much about the voice, it's about the structure and how we operate and how the rest of the province and other municipalities work the same way we are.
I'm talking about the voice of the city council that represent the public.
Repeat, repeat that.
I say the voice from the city council that represent the public, you go more representative or less representative, which is what I tried to ask you.
So that's the basis of where we've gotten today. I gave you the history of why we're having the public presentation. It's not really a debate where we answer questions back and forth with you. We're giving you the opportunity to explain to us why you're opposed or why you're for it. So I understand that you are opposed to it, and I'm understanding from what you're saying that you're opposed to it because you feel that less councillors would provide less of a voice to the taxpayers. Is that correct? That's what your opposition is? Thank you.
My name is John Bailey, 37, Sentinel East. First of all, my question, my comment is that I oppose the downsides of the council. And my second question, what are the savings?
So, just to be clear, that this is, a public hearing is that we hear from you. So we hear from you, the general public, whether you oppose it or you're for it. So if you oppose it, and you want to state why, and give us your reasons why, so we can take the public's comments back to the table when we finalize our budget.
Yeah, because I think that you can do more, more cost-saving by doing something else than cutting to councillor, because cutting to councillor, you're not going to get the service that even now, we can't get the service with, with the head councillor that we have, much more you're going to go to, downsize it to six. So we are not going to get quality service. So that's why I oppose it.
Okay. Okay, I'll just ask you to sign in, please, on the paper.
I will not take too much of your time. I also oppose the reduction of councillors. Two reasons. Reason number one, you had four years to start cutting up and bring the council up to par, as you put it. You're doing it in the last few months of council. So what you're doing in the last few months, you're dictating to the next council how they're going to operate. That's number one. Number two, I believe there's lots of other solutions and lots of places where you can cut. And, you know, I intend to make a good list and publish it in the paper, so you can, you can read to your leisure, because this is too much, too numerous to mention here in council. But just for the record, I oppose it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Martin Greer, and I oppose this, because I believe that more brains are better than a few, right? And if we got rid of the CSOs, they're not doing anything anyways, we could get two more councillors.
Good evening, I'm Nancy D'Amato, 31, Queens Bay. I oppose to reduce it. I think this town is going to be in for a lot of challenges in the future, and, and the councillors, they also have a full-time job, and this is extra. So if you reduce the number of councillors, that puts more load on them, and then you might have burnout. And then some of your councillors, they're just not going to be able to do the job that they've been voted in to do, and it's not fair to them, I don't think, and for the community also. Okay, thank you.
Call for the second time for the public to come forward.
Good evening, council. My name is Luke Robinson, 199 Westwood Drive. I would like to ask you a favor. I want you to all look to your right and to your left of each other. Each in one, each in every one of you have been elected by the people of this community, which are represented by some of the people in this room. Large groups tend to click together, and the clicks is what is failing in this council because of the large number. So that's why I'm in favor, I wrote it down here, I'm going to be in favor of this, because it showed in the past that council has decided to shun councillors from participating in committees. Therefore, fewer number of councillors will have either a heavier workload, or would be more inclined to share that workload with every different thinking person in that room. And I think that's what's missing here. We're not working together, councillors are not listening to each other, and it's a clicky thing. Majorities rule. Federal and provincial governments run that way. Council does not. We're all supposed to represent the people that elected them, correct? That's what it's about. So I'm going to be in favor, because I have seen it in the past, and I'd like to see some change.
Hi.
My name's Serena Swayze, 107 Pintail, and I'd just like to say that I'm opposed
Thank you, Serena. That was our second time to the public. Third and final time, anyone from the public would like to come forward, in favor or opposed? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for adjournment from our public hearing. Motion to adjourn, please, councillor Byer, seconded by councillor Foley, all in favor. The public hearing is now adjourned. Now call the regular meeting of council for March 12, 2008, to order. Is there anything further to add to the agenda? Can I get approval of the agenda? Moved by councillor Foley, seconded by councillor Ellis, all those in favor. It's carried, thank you. Perfect. And just a reminder that we have regrets, obviously, from Mayor Fenske tonight, and Deputy Mayor Smook is on the line. Go to, the next part of our meeting will be general inquiries, where we have 10 minutes for general inquiries from the public. If anybody has anything to come forward, now is your chance. Second time, and third time. Okay, moving along, we go to adoption of minutes. 4.1 is the adoption of the minutes for, it's moved by me, does that matter? Moved by councillor Valentino, be it resolved at the minutes of the public hearing for bylaw in 19, seconded by councillor Ellis. Be it resolved at the minutes of the public hearing for bylaw in 1962-2018, zoning bylaw amendment held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, February 26, 2018, be adopted as circulated. Go to administration, anything further on this?
No.
I'll call for the question, all those in favor.
Aye.
All right, thank you. It's carried unanimously. Next is Resolution 2018-065, it's moved by councillor Ellis, seconded by councillor Valentino. Be it resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, February 26, 2018, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's carried unanimously, thank you. Moving into resolutions, resolution number 2018-066 is moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Maticek. Whereas on February 12, 2018, council passed resolution number 2018-046, requesting that the province of Manitoba amend the Thompson Charter Act by deleting the reference to a specific size of council, enabling the city to utilize the provisions outlined in the municipal act to determine size of council. And whereas, whereas on February 26, 2018, councillor Wong submitted a written motion to rescind resolution number 2018-046. Now therefore be it resolved, at council rescind resolution number 2018-046, requesting that the province of Manitoba amend the Thompson Charter Act by deleting the reference to a specific size of council, enabling the city to utilize the provisions outlined in the municipal act to determine size of council. I'll go to administration, anything to add on this?
Nothing further than that.
And I will go to the mover, councillor Wong.
Chair, I would like to set aside, because as motion, chapter six, Robert's rule, as a mover, or the maker, the motion maker, I have a right to withdraw, due to the reason the mayor is not here to answer my question. I'd like to postpone the rescind motion for the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to go to city manager Sepatelli. For...
It would be a motion to table.
Okay, so councillor Wong, councillor Wong, councillor Wong, councillor Wong, are you putting a motion forward to table? That will be the direction from city manager. Sepatelli, would you like to put a motion forward to table this resolution?
Based on the chapter said without, without asking permission, so I just want to set aside.
City manager Sepatelli?
The proper way to undertake that is to introduce a motion to table.
Okay, all right then. Councillor Wong, would you like to put... Forward a motion to table this resolution.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go for... I need someone to second that, if that's what you want to do, seconded by councillor Maticek. All those in favor? Opposed? She opposed her, she forward? Okay, so it is, the motion to table has been defeated. So I go to the next resolution? Okay, so now we're back to dealing with the original resolution.
Do it. Okay, I'm not against to open up the Thompson Charter Act, but since we're going to open up this charter act, we might as well make it worthwhile. This is the charter act in my hand right now. The mayor just want to do one section out of the charter act, which is the council of the city, number five, act number five. The council of the city shall be comprised of the mayor of an eight councillors, who should be elected at large. So he just want to amend that from eight to six. And I heard from the councillor, deputy mayor, mentioned about, I want to expand the boundary, so we can tax valid on top of it. And I agree with the deputy mayor mentioned about, it might takes a year. So since you're going to take a year. And the mayor also agree with my suggestion about expand our boundary, to do assessment, and instead of GIL, we got a GIL, the company can manipulate us, how they're going to pay us. So I'd like to make the more, the charter act to further, which is, we've got to touch on the variation of boundaries, 4.2 of the Thompson Charter Act. And also, we had never discussed about when we want to open up this Thompson Charter Act amount ourselves. I want to ask the question to all of you councillor and the chair. When have the mayor or the city councillor, the city manager, made appointment or set a meeting with us to talk about this? Can any one of you, to give me the date that we did mention, or he did mention, we should look into this? Or he just simply throw it out and say, we need to look into this and change it, and let's move forward, without discussion with all of us? Who can give me the date and the location?
So councillor Wong, just to remind you, once again, that if you're going to ask a question, the question is to me, the chair. Thank you very much. We have discussed this at our budget deliberations as a council. So, excuse me, councillor Wong.
I just want to make sure that you know, don't cut me off.
Pardon me? Councillor Wong, I'll be chairing this meeting tonight, and you will be courteous, and when I ask you to speak, you will then be allowed to speak.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So as council, we have discussed this in our budget deliberations as a council as a whole, those that were in attendance will be aware of that. And I'll go to city manager Sepatelli, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just indicate that the amendment was to delete the reference to any numbers in the Thompson Charter.
So just for clarification, as the rest of council is aware of that, when you read this, that this was just to amend the charter, it wasn't number-specific. Councillor Wong, did you have anything else? This is your second time to speak to it.
The date and the time we talking about, we just talking about the budget. We never mentioned about the Thompson Charter Act at all. So why are you making that kind of, I don't want to use the word, but it's not true, throughout the budget? We didn't mention about that.
So if you do some homework and the information that was given to council, you understand that council, when we talked about it, that that was part of the process, that was that you would have to amend the Thompson Charter Act to get to the budget costs of reducing the size of council. So it goes hand in hand. I'll open up to the rest of council, if you have any comments or concerns with the resolution. Thank you, Colleen.
What gets me about this resolution being fought over, it does not say we are putting this down to six. It is just to take a stipulated number. We can go up to 10 for that matter. This is just a housecleaning motion for councillors in the future, that they won't be tied to a specific number of councillors. It's just saying that we can have up to eight councillors in it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Smook. Councillor Maticek?
I agree with councillor Wong on this, that the meeting was never called, a special meeting is definitely warranted for something as important as a charter. For all of you that are old enough, which is most of us here, we remember the Charter of Rights and Freedoms here, here in Canada, and the big hoopla about it, it went on forever. And here in Thompson, we can't call a meeting to discuss it? It's just a knee-jerk thing that's, that it's put out there? That's what's happening here. It's a knee-jerk reaction to a simple discussion at the budget. That is not good enough.
Thank you. Councillor Wong, were you speaking again to this?
Yes. I'd like to say that again. Yeah, throughout the budget, we did talk about reducing the council, due to the hardship facing we are going to face, but we still never mentioned about the Thompson Charter Act at all. So out of the blue, you guys bring up the Charter Act, so that's why I want to, I did my homework, you're right, I did my homework, that's why I print out this, to read every single act. We never talked about it. So why are you saying that we did?
Thank you, councillor Byer.
Yeah, I just want to point out, we did mention that the charter would have to be changed, and we did it on at least two, at least on two occasions during budget, and I cannot give you dates, because I don't remember the dates offhand, okay? We did mention it, but you're right, we never discussed looking at the charter as a whole. But then during our budget deliberations, nobody asked if we could look at the charter as a whole. We were only focused on this one matter, and nobody from council brought it up, that maybe we should look at the charter as a whole. So if that is something that we want to do, I'm not against doing it, I just think that that should have come up when we were discussing our budget, as opposed to bringing it up now. That's...
Thank you, councillor Ellis.
The provincial government that, that has advised us that in order to, in order to change our composition, that we must change our charter, right? So, and by deleting that line in the charter, it, it puts us in line with, with what's in the municipal act. And I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to the rescinding of the, of the, of the resolution.
Thank you, city manager Sepatelli.
I was just going to indicate as part of the process, what's at play, the issue to be discussed, is the composition of council, not the, the entire charter. What was given to administration was to determine the processes that are required in order to, one, amend the Thompson Charter, but also sort of undertake the provisions or processes as outlined in the municipal act.
Thank you. Any other comments? Here, councillor Foley?
We're doing with this, this change in our, in the Thompson Charter Act is giving us the, us and/or future council, the ability to either reduce or increase the members of council. As has been stated from the public hearing, we've had an opinion that saying that we may need more members of council. This will let us do that. There aren't going to be any numbers actually in here, and I think leaving it open would benefit this council and future council to be able to run the, the council of the day, as they see that would better fit the city.
Comments? Hearing, oh, councillor Maticek?
I just want to remind council also, that the Thompson Charter is also where the 1956 agreement with INCO gains its power.
Thank you. Councillor Wong, this will to close?
Yes, thank you. I think some wrong with this council that do not understand my rescind motion. I'm not opposed to amend, okay, the number five act, which is reducing the council. I'm just saying, since we're going to open up the Charter Act, which is have to go through the process, which is the province got to look at it, look into it, and then come back to us. I still haven't asked the, the city manager yet, had the province come back, the result, yes or no, they're going to entertain this or not? I forgot to ask you that question, before I finish up my comment.
City manager Sepatelli?
We're still dealing with the province on this issue.
Okay, thank you. So since we are going to take the step to open up, to amend this, why not make it worthwhile, which is open... why not make it worthwhile, which is open up the boundary as well? For the future. So we can ask the province, which is called joint effort, to do this for the future, what the best for city of Thompson, instead of our, ourselves individually. So, we open up this, amend this section 4.2, so we can go to the province and say, look, we'd like to expand our boundary with the school district as well. So in the future, we can be possible, assess valid or whatever company in the future, possibility, whatever. Instead of let them putting a person here or whatever reason, the GIL negotiation, which has failed, in my opinion, for the last three terms. Thank you.
Thank you, City Mayor Sepatelli.
Just, just indicate, I mean, the Thompson Charter doesn't restrict the city of Thompson for changing their boundaries if they wanted to. Changing of boundaries, there's a process that's outlined in the municipal act.
Thank you for clarification. I'll be calling the question on this resolution to rescind. All those in favor? Yep. Opposed? Deputy Mayor Smook?
Aye, opposed.
Thank you. So the resolution is, to rescind has been defeated. And I'll go to Resolution 2016067, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved that council approve the attendance of Deputy Mayor Smook at the Look North Roundtable Meeting in Flynnflan, Manitoba on March 20th, 2018. And be it further resolved that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Go to administration for support.
Just indicate that Deputy Mayor Smook's attendance on the Look North Roundtable, all costs incurred are borne by Look North.
Thank you. Uh, comments or questions by council? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Resolution 2018068, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved that council approve the attendance of Mayor Fensky and Gary Sepatelli, city manager, at the AMM Mayor's Reeves and CAOs in Brandon, Manitoba on April 10th, 2018. And be it further resolved that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Go to administration for support.
Get to council, the, the cost of the mayor's and my attendance at this event is just over $1,600.
Thank you, go to the mover, Counselor Ellis.
They're attending this meeting.
Thank you, any other comments by council? Counselor Wong?
The question I've been asking quite frequently about the, the budget, which we allocate for administration for travelling expense, what is the amount that we allocate? So I'd like to know that, please.
Thank you, we can get that information- From you from Jenny Krentz, our CFO. Call for the, I'm gonna call for the question on this, if there's no further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Next is Resolution 2018069, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved that council approve the attendance of Mayor Fensky and Gary Sepatelli, city manager, at the AMM Cities Caucus Meeting in Brandon, Manitoba on April 11th, 2018. And be it further resolved that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Go to administration.
This, the Cities Caucus Meeting is the following day from the Mayor's Reeves and CAOs meeting.
Thank you.
No additional costs are incurred.
Thank you for clarification. Uh, go to the mover, Counselor Ellis, any comments?
For the terms of the Mayor's Reeves and CAO meeting, and it's the next day, there's no additional cost, I'm in favor.
Thank you, go to council, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Go to Resolution 2018070, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Kalata. Be it resolved that council approve the attendance of Counselor Byer in AMM Board Meeting in Portage de Prairie, Manitoba on March 21st and 22nd, 2018. And be it further resolved that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. I'll go to administration.
I'll just indicate all costs are borne by the AMM Association.
Thank you. Obviously I moved this, so I'll be voting in favor of it, I'll go to council for any comments. Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's carried unanimously, thank you. Resolution 2018071, moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas the Nickel Days Committee is planning for the upcoming Nickel Days Weekend that will take place on June 21st to the 24th of 2018 at the Thompson Regional Community Centre. Now therefore be it further resolved that council declare Nickel Days a special event in the city of Thompson. I'll go to administration.
Indicate as, as the memo identifies, is that the Nickel Days Committee is paying the appropriate fee as outlined in the fees and fines schedule, which is $474.
Thank you, I'll go to the mover, Counselor Wong, anything you'd like to add? Any other comments by council? Counselor Foley?
To this being a special event, what that does is covers vendors that are coming in from out of town to not have to purchase an additional business license, that it'll be covered under the special and coverage through Nickel Days.
Thank you for clarification on that. Any other comments by council? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's carried unanimously, thank you. Resolution 2018072, moved by City Councillor Valentino, seconded by, I'm not sure who this is. Seconded by Counselor Foley. Whereas the province of Manitoba enacted legislation providing an alternative approach for processing and resolving minor bylaw infractions. The Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Act, which came into force on February 1st, 2017. And whereas on February 13th, 2017, council passed bylaw 1953-2017, being the Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Act, enabling bylaw to allow enforcement of city bylaws, including parking bylaws. And whereas on April 24th, 2017, council passed Resolution Number 2017109, approving entering into a contract with Brian Taylor as the screening officer for the city of Thompson for the period of April 25th, 2017 to April 24th, 2018. And whereas the one-year screening officer contract will expire on April 24th, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that council approve the contract with Brian Taylor as the screening officer for the city of Thompson for a two-year period from April 25th to, April 25th, 2018 to April 24th, 2020, at a rate pay of $50 per case. I'll go to administration for support on this.
Yeah, just indicate as, as identified in the memo, with the, the province of Manitoba enacting that legislation, parking violations were no longer going through the court system and municipalities had to put in place their own enforcement system, which obviously is, city of Thompson has done in passing a bylaw and creating a screening officer. The, the interactions of the screening officer have worked out well for the city. And as, as identified in the memo, the initial understanding or interpretation that it would take approximately 20 to 30 minutes to undertake a review of each individual case, in effect that has almost doubled from that aspect and as a result, recommending that we increase the per-case fee from $30 to $50 and to enter into a two-year contract with Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, I'll go to council for any questions or comments?
Colleen, you're-
Okay, go ahead Deputy Mayor Smook.
Yes, I think that's a very good deal on our behalf, for $50 a case. We're not paying anybody on the full-time or even as a part-time wage. I will definitely be supporting that.
Thank you, Counselor Kalata?
Question to the raise in pay, $50 isn't a lot of money. However, we're increasing the term of that contract by an additional year and I think it might be more appropriate to have a one-year contract and have the new council review the, review of future contracts, so.
Thank you, Counselor Byer?
How many cases do we get in a year?
A dozen, two dozen and a half.
Thank you. Counselor Wong?
Okay, the question is, from $30 jump to $50, any reason? Is that inflation or it's just a request?
As identified in the memo, the, the initial fee was set on a value of 20 to 30 minutes. The application per case over the year is likely closer to an hour and that's the reason of the increase.
Thank you, any other comments by council? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, it's carried. Going to Resolution 2018073, this is moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Whereas Comair International has been the major sponsor of the city of Thompson arts programming and special events for the past 15 years. And whereas Comair International currently rents a banner space in the CA Nesbit Arena, which is not part of their sponsorship agreement. And whereas Comair International is requesting an additional banner space in the CA Nesbit Arena for one year at no cost. And whereas in exchange for banner space, Comair International will provide 20 free return flights from Winnipeg to Thompson for city of Thompson's special events. Now therefore be it resolved that council approve the waiving of the 2018 fee for the CA Nesbit Wall Banner Large Space at a cost not to exceed $2,362.50 in exchange for 20 return flights from Winnipeg to Thompson from Comair International. I will go to administration.
See that the, the resolution and memo are quite self-explanatory. And really in exchange for the, the value of one of the advertising wall spots in, in exchange for the, the free flights is something that the city of Thompson, from a value perspective, turns out in our benefit.
Thank you, Counselor Byer?
I love this, this, this kind of partnership when it comes your way. And as we move forward with some of the challenges that we have identified and that we're not able to identify, I think we're gonna have to look for more different creative partnerships and, and agreements with people. And to me, this is clearly an awesome one. It clearly is in, in favor of the city. I think it's very generous of, of Comair to offer 20 free return. And it's just nice to see that we're able to partner and work with our community like that. So I'm glad to see this come forward.
Counselor Foley?
Committees, Winterfest committee being one of them. The, the flights offered by Comair are definitely invaluable. The money that we save by using these free flights has drastically reduced the cost of bringing in entertainment for some of our big special events. So it's, it's definitely worthwhile to have.
Thank you, any other comments, Counselor Wong?
Yeah, question is about the, the flight. Is a 20-return flight, do they have a limited, expiry date or limitation? Just a question, Wong? Second, second question would be, who is allowable to use those kind of flight?
Go to administration.
So as, as indicated, this is based on the value for the year. So really as identified by Counselor Foley, it's really to offset some of the costs for bringing up acts as part of the city of Thompson arts programming events that are put on over the, the course of the year.
Thank you. Any other comments by council? Just like to add that, I think this is also a great partnership, Comair doing this with us, with the city of Thompson. Thank you to Comair for coming forward with this. I'll call for the question, all those in favor of this?
Aye.
It's carried unanimously, thank you. We're now gonna move into bylaws. Um, this is Resolution Number 2018074, it's moved by Counselor Ellis and it's seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved that bylaw 1960-2018, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to establish specific campaign finance rules, be given second reading. Go to administration, anything to add?
I mean, obviously the memo clearly explains that really there's minor amendments to this bylaw, this existing bylaw, to reflect the, the dates of the pending general election on October 24th of 2018.
Thank you, I'll go to Counselor Ellis as the mover. Any comments by council? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's carried unanimously. Resolution 2018075, it's moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved that bylaw 1960-2018 be given third and final reading and that it do now pass? This will be in a recorded vote. Administration, anything further? Go to the mover, Counselor Ellis, anything? Comments by council? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Voting in favors, Counselor Matichuk, Counselor Byer, Counselor Wong, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Valentino, Counselor Foley, Counselor Kalata and Deputy Mayor Smook. It's carried unanimously, thank you. Resolution 2018076 is moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Be it resolved that bylaw 1961-2018, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to amend bylaw 1912-2014, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to authorize the use of vote counting machines in the city council and school board elections in the city of Thompson, be given second reading. Go to administration, anything you'd like to add?
To identify sort of the same thing as to a minor housekeeping amendments to the vote counting bylaw, just to reflect the, the dates of the pending general election, October 24th of 2018.
Thank you, I'll go to the mover, Counselor Byer, anything? Go to council for comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's carried unanimously, thank you. Resolution 2018077 is moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved, be it resolved that bylaw 1961-2018 be given third and final reading and that it do now pass? This will be in a recorded vote, administration, anything further? Counselor Ellis as the mover? Any comments by council? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Voting in favors, Counselor Matichuk, Counselor Byer, Counselor Wong, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Valentino, Counselor Foley, Counselor Kalata and Counselor Smo-, or Deputy Mayor Smo-, my apologies. And I'll be moving into Mayor Fensky's mayor report. This is a list of Mayor Fensky's activities from February 27th to March 12th, 2018. Along with city manager Gary Sepatelli, they met with Hilga Bryant and Scott Hamel of NRHA on February the 27th. Along with administration, met with the Liquor and Gaming Authority and a conference call was held with Minister Carr on March 1st. Along with council members and city manager Gary Sepatelli, attended and brought greetings at the Winter Games VIP reception on March 4th. Along with city manager Gary Sepatelli, met with Minister Cox on March 5th. Along with Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Valentino and city manager Gary Sepatelli, met with the Bulk Fuel Industry and along with city manager Gary Sepatelli, met with Ian Phillips of Shaw Communications on March 6th. Along with city manager Gary Sepatelli and Director of Development Services Anthony McGinnis, met with Waqar Choudri on March 7th, is that correct pronunciation? A telephone interview was held with CJOB Winnipeg on March 8th. The bi-weekly Thompson 2020 conference calls continue. The monthly water treatment plant meetings continue. Various committee meetings were held. Development Review, Public Works, Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs and Public Safety were held. Proclamations. There is two merril proclamations. Whereas the goal of National Nutrition Month is to encourage all Canadians to eat well. And whereas registered dietitians are a trusted source of credible nutrition information and are launching a campaign focusing on helping consumers make healthier food choices. And whereas Canadians are interested in healthy eating and want information to help them achieve this goal, dietitians offer nutrition resources as well as interactive tools on the Dietitian of Canada website, www.dieticians.ca. And whereas to celebrate National Nutrition Month, the dietitians of the city of Thompson have organized fun educational events which will feature the potential of food to improve health, prevent disease and keep us well together. Now therefore by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Nutrition Month in the city of Thompson. And this is signed by Mayor Dennis Fensky, dated at Thompson, Manitoba, this 23rd day of February 2018. This is the same one? Oh, no, there's a different one, sorry. Whereas dietitians have the distinct ability to translate the complex science of nutrition into practical, healthy eating solutions, and whereas registered dietitians use their nutrition expertise to help individuals make positive lifestyle changes, and whereas registered dietitians work throughout our community in the Thompson Clinic, Thompson General Hospital, Northern Spirit Manor, Regional Diabetes Program, and various partners with other agencies and programs, and whereas registered dietitians are advocates for advancing health of Canadians through food and nutrition. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as National Dieticians' Day in the city of Thompson, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of dietitians and express appreciation for their commitment to promoting science-based food and nutrition in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow. And this is signed by Mayor Dennis Fenske, dated at Thompson, Manitoba, this twenty-third day of February two thousand and eighteen. I'll open it up to council for any events that you attended on behalf of the city of Thompson.
Deputy Mayor Smook?
Go ahead.
Yes, I just, today I was at legislature for the provincial budget meeting. I think the fact that the north was mentioned many times, shows were on their radar. I also had the chance, and I'll put it in a report, to meet with twelve different ministers and reiterate partnerships for the north, also met with the Look North people and AMM executives. It was a very productive meeting. I almost missed my six-thirty phone call. I had just got back to the hotel. We were there from noon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Smook. We look forward to the report. Any other, Counselor Foley?
Just to add, the mayor's report outlined that members of council had attended the opening ceremonies of the Manitoba Winter Games. Just want to congratulate all the hard work that was done by the volunteers and the chairs, and of course, the participation by all the athletes. I've heard nothing but positive feedback from in and out of Thompson in regards to how surprised a lot of people who were from out of town were very pleasantly surprised with the amenities that we had, especially in regards to our ski hill and the TRCC. So I just want to reiterate that it was a huge success on all accounts, and congratulations to everyone that was involved. It was a lot of hard work in a short period of time, and it was a definite benefit to the city.
Thank you, Counselor Foley. Any other? Counselor Byer?
Will, thank you very much, Mr. Sepatelli, for the recola. As most of you know, I've been away for the last two weeks on a family matter, and so I was trying to follow the games. Thank goodness for modern technology, because I wouldn't have been able to do this at the last Winter Games that we hosted, but to be able to see the YouTube interviews and pick up in other apps and other people's comments that were being made, and then to come home in less than twenty-four hours, I bet you I had at least a couple of dozen positive comments, ranging from different things, whether it's the hospitality, or the number of volunteers, or just the way things were organized and handled. It's really nice. And so, as much as I regretted not being able to be here to be part of it all, it really makes you feel proud to be away and to come home and hear those kinds of comments. So, thank you, from somebody who had to look at it from the outside.
Any other comments from council? Just like to add a couple of comments. One is, was identified this morning at the mayor's meeting, was if all citizens, it's March, and for whatever reason, we're in the plus for weather, so please be aware of the rivers and waterways. It's as quick as they froze, it's as quick as they are unfreezing before us. So please be safe. We're going to have some PSA communications going out there to the public also. I would just like to end by my thoughts for the Winter Games. I had the opportunity to sit on the board throughout that process, and I gave closing remarks yesterday at closing ceremonies on behalf of Mayor Fenske, Deputy Mayor Smook, council. A big thank you to our city of Thompson employees. They went above and beyond the million little things that leading up to and during that they did for us. They were a big part of making the games a success and for showcasing us to the rest of the province. So thank you to all of our city of Thompson employees, and it won't hurt for all of us to give them a thank you when we see them. The other thing I'd like to identify from the games is that they are saying that there were approximately eleven thousand spectators that attended our venues to take part in this. We will get accurate numbers and more data from them as they get their reports together. So we definitely showcased ourselves as a city to the entire province with that many people taking in our venues. Thank you to our volunteers, whatever capacity you played or did to help put this on. No role was too small, and the city of Thompson couldn't have done it without our volunteers and without the citizens of this town, including our business community and our sponsors, and just the support was overwhelming. There's been nothing but positive, and as I said at closing ceremonies, and I can see that some of you were there, that I think it certainly gave a new sense, renowned sense of passion and flame to this city, and it's something that we needed, and I think that we need to continue with the positive that we've heard this last week, because there was far more positive comments than the negativity that seems been going around here for a while. So let's move forward with the positive remarks that our city and all of us definitely got thank yous and recognition for. Counselor Byer?
Can you please share the comment that you made from one of the, I don't know if it was a spectator or somebody from the Winter Games committee official?
Yeah, sure. I spoke to this at the mayor's meeting, that after we had board meetings in the morning, we would go to food services and have breakfast, some of us, and we were having breakfast, and some gentleman, he was the green region, I can't remember what green region was, but he came over to us and kind of interrupted Mayor Fenske's breakfast and said, I'm sorry to interrupt, and he was kind of a gruffier kind of man, and I think he was speed skating, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, and he said, just want to say, and he shook his hand, that he said, I've attended Canadian national events, he said, and your city putting this event on and how you guys are doing it, he said, this is comparable to Canadian national games that I have attended to. And it kind of took us all back, but those were the level of comments that the quality of these games and the quality of showcasing the city of Thompson did. Counselor Calata?
Yes, thank you. I think part of the reason for the success was the fit of the volunteers. The organizers put the volunteers who are best suited for their activities. Myself, I was a captain at the female village, but for instance, I know that Counselor Maticek provided equipment to load the transport trucks. So it was a good fit where people were placed, and that was, had a lot to do with the success of the games.
Thank you. I agree. So let's keep all the positive comments about the city going, moving forward. Can I get a mover for adjournment? Counselor Foley, Counselor Byer, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, Colleen.